We're here at City Hall and our council members are from remote tonight. And we would start with item number one, which is call the roll. Mr. Reynolds.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Counselor Lehman.
Here.
Counselor Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Contreras.
Here.
Counselor Brennan.
Here.
Thank you very much. Item number two, if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The republic, the which is.
The which is stand.
One nation, under God. Revere peace.
The Constitution.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Just one addition, Mr. Mayor. Item, we're going to add item nine C, which is an operations update. Chief Tate wants to give us a couple of minutes of an update on what's happening in the city.
That would be great. Nine C.
Yes, sir.
Others, Counselor Brennan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for April 7th, 2020.
I'll second that. Jay Whiting.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion? Further discussion?
Roll call.
By voice vote, then, without any further discussion, Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars. Aye. The agenda has been approved. Moving ahead to item number four, which is our consent agenda. Are there any adds or subtracts, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Lehman.
Counselor Lehman, removing four B one, four B two, four B five, and four B three. I asked staff prior to the meeting to have these items removed.
I'm sorry. So, four B one, four B two, and five.
Four B five.
Four B five, those three.
And four D three.
Four D three. Okay, I got that.
Counselor Lehman, I'll move the consent agenda as Mars said.
I have a motion by Counselor Lehman, a second by.
Contreras.
Counselor Contreras.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, so I do have a motion and I do have a second for the modified consent agenda. And before we would vote, we will read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for April 7th, 2020. Four A one approves the minutes from the March 17, 2020, meeting. Four A two adopts Resolution Number R 2020 Tac 047, which calls for a public hearing regarding the issuance of revenue obligations under Minnesota statutes, Sections 469.152 through 469.1655, as amended, and provides preliminary approval to the issuance to finance construction and equipping of the emergency department, cancer treatment center, and other capital needs for St. Francis Hospital. Four A three adopts Resolution Number R 2020 Tac 049, which allows filing of the 2019 pay equity report. Four B three approves a license agreement with Northern State Power Company doing business as Excel Energy for use of its property for a mountain bike park, including construction of trails. Four B four approves a contract with Confluence in an amount not to exceed $96,000, excuse me, $96,040 for an architectural history survey of the former Sweeney Marina. Four C one adopts Resolution Number R 2020 Tac 032, which authorizes submission of an application to the Community Oriented Policing Services School Violence Prevention Program Grant. Four D one approves a contract with Pipe Services Corporation, an amount not to exceed $44,825.60 for the 2020 sanitary sewer televising project. Four D two authorizes the annual roadway seal coat, crack sealing, and pavement marking work, and a portion of the capital improvement plan project, 2020 pavement rehabilitation, which is Project CIF Tac 20 Tac 006, in the amount of $599,700 to be awarded as part of the 2020 South Metro Joint Powers Agreement Contract. Four D four adopts Resolution Number R 2020 Tac 041, which awards a contract to Molnau Tracking LLC for the 2020 bituminous overlay project, which is CIF Tac 20 Tac 002, in the amount of $1,482,285.75. Four D five adopts Resolution R 2020 Tac 034, which authorizes an application submission to the 2020 regional solicitation for multi-use trails and bicycle facilities grant. Four D six adopts Resolution Numbers R 2020 Tac 035 and R 2020 Tac 050, which authorizes applications to the 2020 regional solicitation for roadway modernization grant and to the 2020 Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant. Four D seven adopts Resolution R 2020 Tac 046, which awards a contract to Rostie Construction Company for the 12th Avenue project, excuse me, the 12th Avenue Trail Project, which is CIF Tac 20 Tac 003, in the amount of $839,376.20. And four D eight adopts Resolution Number R 2020 Tac 042, which approves plans and orders the advertisement for bids for the 2020 trail rehabilitation and reconstruction projects, CIF Tac 20 Tac 001, and PA Tac 20 Tac 01.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. And the consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. By voice vote, Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting. Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars. Aye. The consent agenda has been, the modified consent agenda has been approved. Thank you very much. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens to the City Council on an item not on the agenda. I believe that we've been taking emails in that regard. And Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Mars. At this point, we have received no emails or no communication from any resident that requests to bring something in front of City Council tonight.
Okay. So, no items in regard to number five. Moving forward, then, we would move to item number six, business removed from consent. And we will start with four B one, application for an environmental and natural resource trust grant. And Counselor Lehman had questions. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mars. This is Counselor Lehman speaking. The, I'm not necessarily opposed to seeking a grant for the study on archaeology study of the park. My concern is with the removal of the parking lot in the playground where I would like to see the park state pretty much in its current state for the residents with kiosk and stuff. And I've said this before, educational pieces on the historic nature of both the tribal mounds, the mill, and some of the other features. So, I'm not sure if I'm reading this correctly, saying that them items would be removed, or if the study would study to see if they would be removed.
Okay. Let's ask Mr. Kurski to comment on this in regard to your questions. Counselor Lehman.
So, Mayor and council, as part of preliminary archaeological studies, they've already been done in the park. The existing playground is sitting on a burial mound. Well, people look at the park and see the large mounds that are there, most of the park. Even though it's been leveled and is grass, there are still some burial mounds remaining. So, the playground is in an archaeological sensitive area. The volleyball court would end up being, the sand volleyball court would end up being in kind of the more natural area. So, the plan right now is to actually study the rest of the park and see where the archaeological resources are there, and move the activity closer to the areas that have been disturbed, like down near the picnic shelter. That's where the new playground would go, on the southwestern corner of the park. So, the parking lots are not getting removed at this time. It's just the playground, which was due and scheduled to be removed, I believe, at the end of this year, anyway. It's reached its age where it's not in the best of shape, so had been planned and being removed, anyway. It would be replaced with more of a surface nature play down by the one picnic shelter that will remain.
Counselor Lehman.
Follow-up question?
Yes?
He said follow-up question. He said follow-up question.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Counselor Lehman, follow-up question. Will there be a active playground for kids in this park?
Yes, not as a metal one that you see there today, but there has been designed a nature playground that would be down around the existing shelter that will remain in the southwest corner of the park. There will not be a jungle gym as you see today, because that requires substantial ground penetration.
Counselor Lehman, more?
The current parking lot will remain?
The.
By the playground?
The parking lot that has the large kind of island in the middle of it will remain. Long-term, the two short parking lots that are in the oak tree root areas will be closed off. And then the large parking lot that's along the highway will also remain.
So, the parking lot by the playground will be closed off?
No. The parking lot that's adjacent to the playground, which is the large parking lot, will remain. There's two little parking lots that are under the existing oak trees, so they would be on the southeast corner. Will eventually degrade and go away. They're right on top of the mounds, and they're also on top of the roots for those oak trees.
Counselor Lehman, do you have more?
No, sir.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Whiting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application to the Legislative Citizens Commission of Minnesota Resources Environmental Natural Resources Trust Fund.
This is Counsel Brennan. I second.
I have a motion by Counsel Whiting, a second by Counsel Brennan. Further discussion? Discussion? Seeing none? By voice vote, Counsel Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
No.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Mayor Mars. Aye. So, that passes four to one. We will move on to item number four B two, which is the application to the Met Council for a TBRA grant. And Counselor Lehman, your questions on this, please? Go ahead.
Counselor Lehman, Mayor, thank you. I took this off so I can vote against it. It's almost, we're looking for another almost a million dollars in taxpayer money to go into this project. Every time we act on this project, it's more tax dollars and more tax dollars. And at some point, in my mind, it's just unacceptable use of tax dollars in such extreme. So, I wanted to take it off so I had the opportunity to vote against it.
So, no real questions, just a statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yep, no, I think.
This is Counsel.
Yes, Counselor Brennan.
This is Councilmember Brennan. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R 2020 dash 045, which is an application for a Metropolitan Council TBRA grant.
This is Councilwoman Contreras. I second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? 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 By voice vote, Counsel Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
No.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars. Aye. The motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Moving ahead, then, to four B five, adoption of the 2020 Minnesota State Codes. Counselor Lehman, question?
Thank you, Mayor Mars. Counselor Lehman. I took that off because, in my information, I didn't have the actual changes to the building codes in our packet, so I haven't had the chance to read them and see what's in them. My concern is, a lot of these codes are going to be housing much more expensive, and according to the memo, it's one updated 2015, so we must have missed 16, 17, 18, and 19. I don't believe we're required to do this. It is recommended. I'd like to look through them and see which ones are realistic and which ones are not, and how they affect the cost of housing.
All right. Do you have specific questions? Or, Mr. Kurski?
I think I just asked. I think I just asked my specific question. Number one, I'd like to read the full content. Number two, I'd like to know how they affect the price of housing, and which ones are actually necessary for structural integrity.
Thank you. Mr. Kurski.
Mayor and council, so this, the city is adopting the Minnesota State Codes. As of January 1st, 2008, municipality has in effect an ordinance adopting the state building code, which we do. That municipality must continue to administer and enforce the state building code within its jurisdiction. The municipality is prohibited from repealing its ordinance and adopting the state code. So, whether we want to or not, we're required by state law, we're one of the seven metro counties that has to enforce the state building code. This is not a pick and choose. The state is adopting the 2018 code, so we're already two years behind it. Minnesota is a little unusual, and they don't adopt the standard building code. They spend a couple of years making tweaks to it, and that is done by the building industry and building officials, insurance industry, fire departments, et cetera. You will see the electrical code. I think it will be on the agenda in June, because it's adopted for July 1. The changes are voluminous. Our staff is actually still reading through it. It's probably in the thousands of pages, and they actually don't print a compare side by side. It's just a completely new code. Most of the contractors in the state have been going to training for probably the past six months to a year, so that they're up to date on the new code. There's changes in pipe, wood, spans, fire protection. It's a pretty comprehensive code change since it's been five years.
Thank you.
Follow-up question?
Say that again. Counselor Lehman.
Follow-up question, Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman, following question. Conservation codes for existing buildings. What does that mean?
Mayor and council, that's the energy code.
What does that mean for an existing building?
So, whatever the requirements were in 2015, they've been updated to the 2018 code that had been passed. So, that's energy efficiency, insulation requirements, building.
Well, wait a minute. Wait a minute. We're talking about existing buildings. These codes are going to make somebody with an existing building go back and re-insulate an existing building?
No. So, Mayor and council, so if you're renovating a building today, and you want to put a commercial building, let's say, and you want to put in new front doors, there's now a requirement that you have an airlock, so that all the cold air or hot air isn't blowing into a commercial building.
If you're renovating.
Yes.
If you have an existing building and do no renovation, I believe your grandfather did on the old stuff, right?
And as long as you don't change the use.
Right. Change the use.
Last question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Lehman, my last question on the topic. Mr. Kurski stated that the state is adopting the 2018 codes. Why are we going two years ahead of the state?
Mayor and council, they are adopting, as the 2020 code in Minnesota, the building code from 2018, because, as I said, the state makes a lot of changes to the code. There's a whole committee that participates in that, from the building industry and contractors, and it takes them a couple of years to look through that code and make changes. So, we're always behind. So, again, we're adopting the 2018 code. We've been using the 2015 code. So, the 2020 code in Minnesota is actually the national code from 18 with Minnesota modifications.
Other counselors have a question?
Mayor Mars.
Oh.
It's Counselor Contreras.
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R 2020 dash 048, adopting the new Minnesota building codes by reference.
Thank you.
This is Counselor Whiting. I second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Counselor Contreras, a second by Counsel Whiting. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Counselor Lehman.
Counselor Lehman, I would, I have a hard time voting on something that I haven't had the ability to read, so I'll be voting against it until I read it.
Thank you. Further discussion? By voice vote, Counsel Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Opposed.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Mayor Mars. Aye. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Moving ahead to four D three, which is the 2020 Full Depth Payment Reconstruction Project. Counselor Lehman, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Mars. Not so much of a question. Well, actually, it could be a question. This is Counsel Lehman. I ask this to be removed from the consent agenda, because, as we all know, we had a lot of folks in the audience with questions the last time we had this discussion. I think it's only fair that we discuss it publicly and let those impacted and answer some of them questions, namely, the Montecito area where there's some changes to the subsoil and some assessment changes. And I just thought it was prudent and transparent for us to have that discussion publicly at this meeting before we adopt this.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, I had some questions on this, and maybe some other council members had questions on this. He put out an email the other day with some comments in regard to that. We'll start with Mr. Reynolds and go to Steve, if necessary.
Yeah, we can go ahead and go to Mr. Lilyhog. He is ready to discuss this in depth.
Mayor and council members, good evening. Someone you can hear me?
Little alley.
Okay, I will talk louder.
There you go.
All right. We received bids for the 2020 Full Depth Payment Reconstruction Project. They were good bids. They came about $240,000 underneath our engineer's estimate. When we broke that down for the different neighborhood, the majority of the neighborhoods and the individual assessment costs were reduced. For the Park Ridge neighborhood, they were just slightly under what the assessments were going to be, and that was, and it went from about $4,400 to $4,200 per lot. The Dominion neighborhood generally was reduced by $500. West Ridge neighborhood went up about $250. The Montecito area, we saw that when we prorated the cost, and with some of the design changes that we made, it was actually reduced by about $1,000, from $4,300 to about $3,300 per lot. And then, in the last area project, on the Sarazin Street area, this was prorated, basically assessed just to the hospital. It went from about $24,000 to $17,500. When we had the public hearing, we had the Montecito neighborhood showed up, and they had substantial questions. And we actually, as I indicated, we went back and revised our design for that neighborhood. We, after that meeting, we went out and got additional soil borons. We did confirm that we did not need to subcut and put a one-foot sand section underneath that roadway due to the favorable soils that exist in Montecito. We did keep a little placeholder for some subsoil corrections if we needed it. But that was the most notable savings throughout the project. On the public outreach part of it, when we did receive these bids, right at the end of March, we sent a letter to the Montecito neighborhood indicating that there were savings with the bid. And then, as we go forward, we're going to give more specific information. And then as we go forward, we're going to give more specific information, letter in details on the project as a whole, as well as coordinate the projects with the neighborhoods. So, with that, if there's any other further specifics and questions, I'd be open to them.
Thank you, Steve. Councilman Lehman, follow-up questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Lehman speaking. The only other, first, I want to thank staff for putting this information out publicly. It's very much appreciated, and thanks for the great bids. Second question I had was, there was some discussion at that last meeting about various parcels, how some corner lots have 50% on each side, and then other lots have 100% frontage. I know there were two or three, I think there was, that had some issues about how they were being viewed. I'm assuming that was addressed.
Steve?
Mayor and council members, as far as addressing that, we will bring that back to City Council for final consideration during the final assessment hearing at the end of the project. So, there is no formal action that needs to be done on the actual assessment breakdown. We presented our recommendation at the preliminary assessment hearing, so we will bring that back again to City Council at the final assessment hearing. And prior to that, we do plan on preparing more public outreach pertaining to that specific.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that staff's done a good job, as always, but some extra special care here to make sure that we're doing the right long-term reconstruction, as well as trying to save some money where we can here on this road reconstruction project for 2020. Are there other questions from councillors?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Whiting.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, this is Councilmember Whiting. I'd like to make adopt resolution R 2020-040, awarding a contract in the amount of $2,206,194.77 to W.M. Mueller &amp; Sons Incorporated for the 2020 Full Depth Pavement Reconstruction Project, CIF 20-004.
Councilor Contreras, second.
I have a motion by Councilor Whiting, a second by Councilor Contreras. Further discussion? 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 By voice, vote, Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Councilman Lehman?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars, aye. The resolution passes. Thank you. That would conclude our items on item number six, business removed from consent. We would move to item number seven, recess for EDA meeting, and I would entertain a motion to recess.
This is Councilwoman Brennan, I second.
I have a motion by Councilor Whiting and a second by Councilor Contreras to stand in recess for the EDA. Further discussion? 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 By voice, vote, Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Councilman Lehman?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars, aye. We will stand in recess for the EDA. Mr. President, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for April 7th, 2020. Should we do a voice roll call, please? Let's start with Member Lehman.
Here.
Member Mars?
Here.
Member Brennan?
Here.
Member Contreras?
Here.
Second item is approval of the agenda.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Lehman.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Brennan, I second it.
We have a motion and a second by Brennan to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? 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 All those in favor, we'll start with Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
Miss Brennan?
Aye.
Miss Contreras?
Aye.
All right, all approved, and any dissenting? So, item three is our consent business, which includes the EDA minutes. Is there any questions about the minutes?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lehman, go ahead.
Mr. Lehman speaking. I'd like to approve the motion to approve the consent business.
The motion on the floor, is there a second?
This is Brennan, I second.
We have a motion and a second by Brennan for the consent business. All those in favor, go ahead.
Mr. President, as we go through the roll call vote, can you make your vote publicly known, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. I will amend the minutes to reflect that I voted in the approval for both of the above items. On the consent business, we have a motion, is there a second?
I made the motion already.
I second it. This is Brennan.
The motion, we have a motion and a second by Brennan. Let's go through the roll again. Councilmember Brennan?
Aye.
Member Lehman?
Aye.
Member Mars?
Aye.
Member Contreras?
Aye.
And Member Whiting is aye. The other things on our agenda is the EDA bill list. Was there any questions on the bill list? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda would be a motion to adjourn. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April 21, 7:00 p.m.
Contreras, second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Tuesday, April 21st at 7:00 p.m. All those in favor, we'll go through the roll. Member Brennan?
Aye.
Member Lehman?
Aye.
Member Mars?
Aye.
Member Contreras?
Aye.
And Member Whiting says aye. Thank you, we adjourned. Mr. Mayor, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for April 7th, 2020. We just completed our EDA meeting, and we would move ahead to item 9A, which is our city bill list for our review. And then we would move to item number 9B, which is our liaison administration report. So, we would stand with Counselor Brennan. Liaison report, please.
Okay. I attended my first Shakopee Public Utility Commission meeting last night. The commission approved a water tank number eight, which is in the Latour Farm area up in the Windermere project. There was, the tank will be 750 gallons, 750,000 gallons, and there is a budget shortfall of $1.359 million. This is due to errors in the budgeting process in the CIP, and according to the finance director, it will be worked out in the water connection charge. So, that's something that I'll be having to watch, because we don't want to increase our water connection charges again. We also approved new officers for the commission. We elected Deb Amundson as president and Kathy Mokel as vice president. The different, they went through the process of their COVID-19 preparedness planning in the, for both the employees and for customer relations. The office is closed for business other than through phone calls, and there's a drop-off area for payments and other correspondence. So, it's phone calls and emails only. They are prepared to enter homes if necessary. They'll be prepared to have gloves and that type of protective gear on if that's necessary, and they wanted to remind people that they will not be shutting off or turning off electricity or water through this time of COVID-19. I think, I think all in all, that's it. Today, there was an article that was released about John Crook's salary, and the fact that his salary is exceeding the allowed amount by Minnesota statute. And I have written a letter to President Amundson to see if we can have a special meeting called to discuss this. And at this point, I haven't heard back from her. And that's all I have.
Counselor Brennan, thank you very much. Counselor Lehman, liaison report?
Liaison have been canceled due to the physical distancing requirements of COVID-19.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no liaison reports, but I do want to take a minute to thank all the health care and emergency workers out there for putting their health on the line for our community. And I want to congratulate citizens for developing creative ideas to assist and cope and keep kids busy and take care of our community members. I think we've, this is a hard time for everybody, and I'm just glad to see our community coming together and helping people out. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Counselor Contreras, liaison report?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the Shakopee Diversity Alliance held a bilingual listening session with multiple panelists and spoke about the COVID-19 and being ready. They provided the community with resources available from food drives to healthcare and medical information, what to do, you know, to have the symptoms, and the extreme importance of social distancing. It was all great information and bilingual, you know, came in different languages, well, in Spanish mainly and English for our community. So, thank you to them for putting that out.
Thank you. I do not have a liaison report as well. A lot of things have been shut down. But in regard to our residents here in Shakopee, we are in unprecedented times with this COVID-19. Whether you're out of work, working from home, or out on the front lines in your industry or the health care field, I'd like you to know that your city is thinking of all of you. We believe we have, we all have been affected one way or another through this over the last many weeks. Yet, when I look at our residents, I see that we are resilient, adaptable, and most of all, resourceful. I have seen us come together as a community, much like our families coming together. There's food drives, there's efforts for the front medical people, there are folks that will deliver things to you. We are all trying to support each other in our local businesses. We will get through this together. I believe it has made us stronger, and I certainly have enjoyed that I think that because of this, families are coming together and getting stronger. I want all of our residents to be safe. I want you to be careful. I want you to be cognizant of what's around you. We have more work to do in the coming weeks to beat this thing. I encourage you all to stay strong, and most of all, be kind. Thank you, and those are my comments and for my liaison report. And I would move ahead then to Administrator Reynolds for your administration report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Obviously, a pretty challenging time for all of us. I'm extremely happy to report that most of our operations continue. The one issue that we do have is when we're looking at this from a long-term perspective, and we're looking at our financial condition, you know, we're in the best financial condition that we can be in prior to this event, which is a great thing. But the real issue that we have is that we're going to not so much have a lot of expenses that come out of this, although there will be some. Our real issue is going to be a loss of revenue, and we've already started tracking that. We've also started assigning codes to the loss of revenue, so in case there is an opportunity to recoup some of that in the future, we'll be ready and able to make sure that we have all that information to make that happen. So, I appreciate council's patience with us through this period. You've all been great. It's been an honor to try to work through these issues with you at the helm, and I appreciate that, and I know that the residents and especially city staff does as well. And that is my report.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. We will now move on to 9C, which is an operational's update, and we'll start with Mr. Reynolds and then Chief Tate.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm just gonna go ahead and plug into Chief Tate at this point. We, you know, I essentially said what I was gonna say is part of my report there, so, Chief Tate, are you on the line?
I am. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, we've got you.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll try and be brief and to the point here. Overall, our operations are going very smoothly. We're in constant contact with St. Francis, other agencies, not just in the county but around the state, because we're all having the same issues. Thankfully, we're in a county that is nowhere near a hotbed for this. As of 5/30, we're at 16 confirmed cases in the county, one death, but some other numbers, there's not currently one person hospitalized in Scott County, and 14 of the 16 are no longer in isolation. So, those are encouraging numbers, but like you said, Mayor, you know, we still have a road to go ahead here. I get asked a lot about PPE and where we're at. We are just fine, and I've talked to the fire chief, and they're good, too. We haven't burned through hardly anything. There are groups out there, Mayor, I believe Lowe's reached out to you, asking, you know, they've solicited us, they've solicited, I think, the fire department. If you get asked, we do not need anything right now. We've been able to get whatever we want through, you know, other channels, but from a PPE standpoint, we're doing very, very well. We do have one staff member in quarantine right now. It was a very low-risk exposure. It's kind of the, you know, line of the day out of abundance of caution. We're keeping that officer out until we get a test result back. But otherwise, staff-wise, we're doing okay. A little more than probably half a dozen of our staff have spouses who are either paramedics or nurses, so there's been a couple of them that have had to be tested, but we're working through that with those officers and their families. Where we are seeing some increases, obviously, the permit to purchase applications in the last two and a half, three weeks, we're at approximately 130 people have come in for a permit to purchase. We still are relatively busy. Some of the crime has gone down, but our call load hasn't necessarily gone down. necessarily gone down. The compliance order from the governor, the state home order, we have received a lot of calls, I'm guessing some of you have received emails as well on the state home order. I would say half of them have come from residents complaining whether it's kids playing tackle football or a business being open. The other half are coming from businesses whose competitors are still operating. An example would be a lawn care service. So, we've put out our procedure and we've worked with a lot of other cities that have gone through these with, you know, some of the national chain stores. The last thing we want to do is actually intervene in these things, to be quite honest with you. It really puts us in a difficult position, there's a lot of latitude for being outside under the current order. We're all hearing that there, you know, might be modifications coming up and I hope there's a little more clarity, but different things, you know, change and the order gets modified frequently. But we've got a good procedure in place and a one-person point of contact at the police department that's working with the state to kind of iron these out. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Chief Tate, thanks for that update, I think it's important. Counselors, questions of the chief or Mr. Reynolds and I'll, Counselor Brennan?
Have you modified your shifts at all on your, are you, are you running a regular shift for your staff?
Mayor, members of council, we have, we have gone to a modified shift, 12-hour days and the way that we've sectioned off our officers, including the school resource officers, some of the, we're doing that so we have a bullpen, so to speak. If we did have something affect one shift more than another, we would be able to, we'd be able to compensate with that. We also think it's important, there's a lot of different schedules out there, every department's doing something a little, little different, but that 50-50 model we're basing it on is one that we've seen throughout the country probably the most. And we feel it's important that we do have officers out there, these businesses are vacant, we've caught prowlers, there are people trying to take advantage of this situation and it's important even in the morning, let's say at Sam's Club, when, you know, you'll get several people lining up outside, just to have an officer present and hopefully a calming presence, we feel that that's important too. But we have, we have gone to a modified schedule that we're running through the end of April and we'll assess it maybe in a week or two if we need to continue it.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the, for the police officers and the, and the fire department for, for putting that modification in place and being willing to, and being willing to do that. I appreciate all the hard work that they've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman, did you have anything specific for the chief?
No, but I do have two items on the other business.
Okay. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thanks chief for, you know, hanging in there and doing, doing a great job, that's, that's all I have. And there's a lot of issues with stress and things with employees and concern with people coping and so everything we can do to help our officers and help our community, I appreciate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody's been doing real well so far.
Counselor Contreras?
No question, just to tell Chief Tate, thank you and appreciate the extra hard work you guys are taking on and keep it up. And I actually, I have your 2019 annual report and again, awesome work, looks good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Tate, for all that you do with you and your department and as well as the fire department during this difficult time. If, maybe this is a better question for Mr. Reynolds, you know, we don't want residents calling 911 unless it's an absolute emergency or calling City Hall, what's the best resource for our resident?
Well, luckily, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the state a couple of days ago put out word that any complaints need to be directed specifically to them. And we have that complaint number and email address on our website and they can make it directly to the state and what the state will do is they'll filter those so we don't have, because frankly, prior to that happening, I was getting calls, my staff was getting calls, which, which is fine, I would much rather have that happen than the police department getting calls about violations of the order when the police really have more important jobs that they need to be focusing on. And so, now that that's in effect, I had, I did not receive a single call today, I don't know if Chief Tate did, but if we are called, we will direct them to, to make sure that they file that with the state.
All right, and that's on our website.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to number, item number 10, other business. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor, this is Counselor Lehman, I have two items and I didn't do them under liaison report because they're really not liaison reports, but I did want to make the mention. The first one is Mayor John Schmidt's passing. I had the privilege of serving with him for his eight years as mayor. I'd like to say that he's an honest, fair, and respectable individual that I appreciated serving with. He's got a loving family, my condolences to them. I just wanted to put that out there. The second thing I'd like to talk a little bit about was the COVID-19 issues. First, obviously, thanks to all the frontline workers, that includes our frontline workers, whether they're public works, police, fire, administration, all of our workforce. It's difficult for everybody, but absolutely, especially the medical care industry. I think it's important that, two points I want to make about COVID-19 that's important to get out. First is, we need to be careful about any kind of stigma that goes along with this because we need to remember, this is an invisible virus that has come from somewhere else that you can't see and if somebody does acquire this, it's by no fault of their own. Second point I would make is, we need to be thinking ahead and as Mr. Reynolds pointed out, the economic implications further down the road with the nation pretty much shut down, a recession greater than 08 is not out of the, out of the realm. And the third thing I guess I would say is, we know not only in our country and our state specifically, we're ranked right up there as doing the best job, that, I don't want to call it social distancing because that's not really the case, it's physical distancing. You can be socializing all you want, you just have to have that physical separation. And we need to stress that to those that aren't doing that, that they may not know that they're, they have it or somebody else may not know they have it and they can spread it and overwhelm the medical system. So, we are doing a great job as a state, but them are some of the topics I wanted to touch on for people to think about.
Counselor Lehman, thank you very much and your, your points are well taken and also Mayor Schmidt, who just recently passed, longtime mayor and I learned a lot from him just on being patient. He had a lot of history, I knew him for over 25 years. He served our community very, very well over that time and we're thankful for his service, so thank you for that. Other business, Counselor Brennan?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have a concern, I'd like to see if staff can start taking a look at what we can do with some of our organic recycling, we don't have any, Republic's not taking it, the Orks not taking it, people are sitting at home and working on their yards. It's not a big issue that, but I think there's a way we can work to try and help people with their yard waste starting to pile up. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Counselor Contreras?
None right now, thank you.
All right. Moving ahead then, if we have no other business, item number 11, adjournment?
Mayor Mars?
I'm sorry.
Mayor Mars?
More, Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman speaking, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April 21st, 7:00 PM.
This is Brennan, I second.
Thank you very much, I have a motion by Counselor Lehman, a second by Counselor Brennan to adjourn to April 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Before we vote, I just want to tip my hat to city staff and their awesome IT department for pulling off our remote council meeting, we'll probably have another one here coming up on April 21st, but thank you very much for making all the technology work. I have a motion and a second, further discussion, discussion, discussion. Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, we stand adjourned on the 7th day of April at 8:00 PM, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone, really.
It's only seven books, would you like those seven books, Counselor Brennan, or what's on the, uh?
They're in books on page 18.
[crosstalk]